I'd like to call the March 20, 2019 Board of Selectmen's Meeting to order at 6:30. Mr. Town Manager, do we have need for a non-public session?
We do under New Hampshire RSA 91A, colon, 3, Roman numeral number 2, A, C, and E, which is Personnel Litigation and Reputation.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the reelection or election of a Chair. Do I have a nomination for a Chairman?
I'll make a nomination that you retain your chairmanship unless someone else really wants to be Chair, just for the continuity of hiring a new Town Manager and other matters.
Does anybody else have another nomination?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Senical to be our Chairman.
Any other nominations? Why don't we go to, since I was the Chair this year, let's go and I'll put up who would like to make the motion for Mr. Senical.
I'll move to, for Mr. Senical to be the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
David, you want to be, you want to be, okay.
That's fine.
Okay. Next is the election of a Vice Chair. Do I have a nomination?
I'll move that Pratt-Harmon be Vice Chair.
Okay. Any other nominations? Okay, can I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alrighty. What I had put on this agenda, it was the consideration of the selectmen to Town Boards. I presented that as something for members to look over and I think, Dave, you'd like anybody to contact you who'd like a change?
Yep.
Alrighty.
Yeah, if somebody wants to change up, I think we've had, most of us have had these particular committees for some time and it might be a good time to change them up a little bit.
We-
But some of them, some of them may stay the same.
Okay, let me add for you, we have an ad hoc committee of Sinobacteria.
Oh, yeah.
We also have an ad hoc committee on the docks. We have an ad hoc committee on the restrooms. We have an ad hoc committee on the railroad station and I believe the Energy Commission is an ad hoc also?
No, it's a Board of Selectmen Committee.
We made it as a regular committee?
Yep.
Okay, it needs to be added to the list.
Yep.
It's not on the list. Next item on the agenda, approval of the minutes of March 6. Does anybody have any changes or corrections? Yes?
I do. Madam Chairman, on page 6, attributed to me, I want to just make sure I was clear in what I, what I said. The, the second sentence says we have a water department, a sewer department, an electric department, and pop whelan. I was referencing our, our income statement, so I'd like to change abenaki to pop whelan.
Okay.
The next, the, the sentence that says we did a 600-page budget this year and then following that, we add the word "also" have a full-time police department, comma, and then they add the word "and" a full-time fire department. And for the pleasure of the Board, I'm removing the word "full-time sewer department" because it's redundant with the sentence above. And then just for grammar, for grammar, the next sentence, "we tend to get good audit reviews," plural, "at the end of the year." That's all I have, Madam Chairman.
Okay, does anybody else have any corrections or changes?
You want to go back?
I'm, what?
You want to go back to the rules procedure?
I'm going to do that after this.
Okay.
I, I did forget it.
It's Dave.
Thank you, Dave. The, I have a, one on page 10. It says "C attachment," when we do the proposed sewer extension and drainage and I'm assuming that attachment will go with the minutes, it didn't, it was not with the ones we received. I'll back up. I missed the rules of procedure. I think everybody picked up the, the ones in the box. Does anybody have any changes? And I have a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen's rules and procedure as presented.
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Next item on the agenda, I'm going to open up a public hearing. It's the Wolfboro Board of Selectmen. We'll hold a public hearing on Wednesday, March 20, 2019, at 6:30 PM at the Great Hall, 84 South Main Street, Wolfboro, New Hampshire regarding amendment to the Town of Wolfboro Sewer Ordinance related to Section 126-6, use of public sewers and to add a Section 126-6 privately funded sewers.
Madam Chairman?
Yep.
This is point of, point of order. I don't think we approved the, the minutes.
I'm having a good night tonight, aren't I? All right. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye opposed?
I'll abstain because I wasn't here.
Now, we'll go back, I'll open up this public hearing now. I've taken care of the minutes. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak to this public hearing? Do you want to kind of explain it?
Evening, Members of the Board. I'm Matt Sullivan, Director of Planning and Development. I won't review the entire ordinance change set that I've passed along to you, as I did a detailed review of that at the last session, but to generally summarize the changes that we're making to these two portions of the ordinance, as Linda said, we're suggesting an amendment to Section 126-6, which is the use of public sewers section of the ordinance. The primary change here is that we are changing the linear measurement from 100 feet to the primary structure. Currently, the ordinance actually has a 300-foot to the property line measurement and the real reason that we're doing that is really because we're recognizing that the ordinance isn't practical and its implementation in the community right now and we want to be a bit more practical when we're taking these actions in the future and installing new wastewater disposal lines. Additionally, we are adding one provision in 126-6 relative to septic systems found in failure and giving the Town the ability to require immediate connection if a system is found to be in immediate failure, but a system that's post-1985, as we discussed at the last session. We're also amending Section 126-16 by creating 126-16, which is a privately funded sewer line extension section of the ordinance. We have had some private sewer line extensions that ultimately became public lines in the past. We're actually, this ordinance section that we're creating gives the Town the flexibility to have a unique connection policy that gives folks with post-1985 septic systems some leniency in connecting to that public sewer line in accordance with the appropriate RSA, which is 147-8. Specifically, we've created some conditions that will trigger connection. Those are the passage of 20 years from when the sewer line goes in, when the septic system fails on the property, again, this is a post-1985 scenario, when the sewage disposal system needs to be expanded for some modification to the structure that exists. And actually, this is much like a Title V transfer in Massachusetts. We've actually added in this improved property being transferred to a non-family third-party purchaser. So all of those would be triggers for systems that are within 100 feet but are post-1985 as the regulations exist right now. One point of clarification as well is that for structures, primary structures within 100 feet with pre-1985 systems, those structures will be required to connect within a timely manner as prescribed for in the RSA and as prescribed for in Section 126-6 in our use of public sewers ordinance. But these are the two sections we're proposing a change to tonight. I think I've presented these on maybe four or five different occasions in the past, but this is the final version of the ordinance and is exactly the same as the one that I presented two weeks ago.
Am I correct in saying that there is no waiver in this for somebody who, when we put in a private septic system, if they have a pre-1985 septic system, they are forced to?
That's correct and that's because the, the state law in that case would supersede our local regulation. Any, any primary structure within 100 feet with a pre-1985 septic system would be required to connect.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to speak to this change in the ordinance? Come on up.
Good evening. Edward Clem, 135 Clark Road. Wanted to speak in favor of the proposed change to the linear feet piece that was described. Reason for that is it gives families like my family the option, not the requirement, to connect in a situation like we have where our residence, our primary structure is far outside of 100 feet. It's just inside of 300 feet. Gives us the option. Clearly, the requirement if a septic system fails, perfect, we're all for that, but the, we're on Clark Road, the private sewer line's going down there, which is great. We just want the option to choose to connect, assuming our septic system remains functional at a time that, that is appropriate for, for us. It makes more sense, it's rational, 100 feet makes more sense when you just think about it, right? If a building's right there, the sewer line's right there, that makes sense. If the building is through the woods and you can't even see it, it does, it's not as logical. So, in favor of that? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to speak to this public hearing? Hearing none? I'll close the public hearing, Board members. Any comments? Okay, can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we take the proposed language of the sewer ordinance amendments dealing with 126-6 and 126-16.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay. Now we have a whole line of public hearings on temporary event permit. And there were some changes that needed to be made in some of the wording. See if I can find my...
Who's up first here?
And I'm going to read it from our, our agenda because there is some changing. Okay, I'm going to open up the first public hearing. It's Brewster Academy to Hold on the Green One Art and Craft Festival on DeWolff Field, 8 Academy Drive, Wolfboro, New Hampshire, on July 5th through 7th, 2019, 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Friday and Saturday, 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM, oh, on Fri-, on Friday and Saturday, and 10 to 4 on Sunday.
Aye.
Yeah, can you bring the microphone down and see if it, it's on? No, there's a switch up on the top. Can you turn that on?
Battery is dead.
Says dead battery. It's, it goes out.
Okay, I'll try to go fast.
Christine Brown for Brewster Academy. These are our annual arts and craft festivals. We have a variety of vendors, including some snack foods like popcorn, ice cream, simple things. Brings a lot of people to town and all our proceeds go to daystudents scholarships for Brewster.
All right, thank you. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak to this public hearing? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Board members, do you have any questions? I will point out that DeWolff Field is the old Monument Field.
Yes.
So that's why you're hearing a different name. Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Brewster Academy to hold the On the Green One Arts and Crafts Festival on DeWolff Field, 8 Academy Drive, Wolfboro, New Hampshire, on July 5th to 7th, 2019, 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Friday and Saturday, and 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM on Sunday.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Alrighty, I'll open up the second public hearing. It's Brewster Academy to Hold Christmas in July Arts and Craft Festival on DeWolff Field, 8 Academy Drive, Wolfboro, New Hampshire, on July 19th through 21st, 2019, from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Friday and Saturday, and from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM on Sunday.
Same story, different dates.
Okay. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak to this? Hearing none? Board members, I'll close the public hearing. Board members, anybody have any comment? Hearing none? Can I have a motion?
I'll move that Brewster Academy Hold Christmas in July Arts and Crafts Festival on DeWolff Field, 8 Academy Drive, Wolfboro, New Hampshire, on July 19th to 21st, 2019, 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Friday and Saturday, 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Sunday.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye opposed? I'll open up the next public hearing. It's Brewster Academy Hold on the Green Two Arts and Crafts Festival on DeWolff Field, 8 Academy Drive, Wolfboro, New Hampshire, on August 9th through the 11th, 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Friday and Saturday, and 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM on Sunday. Ditto?
Ditto.
Anybody in the audience? I'd like to close the public hearing. Board members, can I have a motion?
Ditto.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? You have your three permits.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brewster Academy.
Okay. I'd like to open up the next public hearing. It's Wolfboro Park and Rec to Hold Granite Kid Triathlon at Brewster Beach and Clark Road on July 20, 2019, from 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM.
Ugh, 8:00 AM.
8:00 AM.
Okay.
11:00 AM. Boy, I'm having a great day today.
I thought that was me. I was like, oh my gosh. Christine Collins with Wolfboro Parks and Recreation. This is our 28th Annual Kid Triathlon. We start, we have, it's two races ultimately. The first race is three to five-year-olds, which is a little bit smaller, basically a training ground for them. We've tweaked it over the time, so we have a limit for how many kids we have that in that one. And then after that, it's six through 16 for the bigger one.
Hey, is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak to this event? Hearing none? Board members, any comments? I like the, the map that you gave us and that you've got plenty of police officers to keep control of the traffic.
Oh, yes. Since it's the 28th Annual, we've kind of tweaked it. We got it, we got a good thing going.
A lot of practice.
You don't have a date on that one.
I know that. Does anybody have any comment? Can I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll move that Wolfboro Parks and Recreation to Hold the Granite Kid Triathlon at Brewster Beach and Clark Road, July 20, 2019, from 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye opposed? The next one is the Park and Rec Creation to Hold Summer Kickoff on June 22 at 88 Lerner Street, Wolfboro, New Hampshire. And this is PM, 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM.
So this is something we do every year, however, we usually do it at Brewster Beach. And so because we have the pavilion, we kind of wanted to showcase it a little bit. And we also have, in conjunction with that, a movie night after. So our plan is to have just a, a, vendors and a group, like, all of us get together and kind of just showcase what's going to be happening in Wolfboro in the summer. So we're reaching out just to people who want to, like, showcase if they have paddleboarding or, or whatever, things like that, just to kind of bring everybody at one location. And then we'll end it with a movie night.
Anybody in the audience who'd like to speak to this event?
Dave.
Hearing none? I'll close the public hearing. Board members?
Yeah, do we have a date for this?
June 22.
I read it.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
June 22.
Mm-hmm.
June 22.
622.
Okay, can I have a motion?
I'll move that the Wolfboro Parks and Rec be given the opportunity to hold Summer Kickoff on June 22, 2019, an event at 88 Lerner Street, Wolfboro, 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay. Next public hearing, I'll open that up, is the Wolfboro Park and Rec to Hold Wolfboro Bike and Walk Day to School and Work throughout downtown South Main Street with Food Station and Huggins Hospital and Kate Park on May 10, 2019, from 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM.
So this, again, another event that's been going on for years. We get a lot of participation with the schools and people who walker, ride their bike that day and we encourage it. And then we have just a, a simple snack food area for them to come and say hi to us. We take pictures and sometimes we have that smoothie bike and stuff and then that's it. We're just celebrating that day.
Anybody in the audience who'd like to speak to that event? Hearing none? Close the public hearing. Board members? Hearing none? Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Wolfboro Parks and Rec to Hold the Wolfboro Bike and Walk Day to School, Work throughout downtown South Main Street with Food Stations at Huggins Hospital and Kate Park on May 10, 2019, 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM.
Second.
Hey, any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Aye opposed? All right, I'll open up the next public hearing. It's the Wolfboro Park and Rec and the Stacy Burns Memorial Scholarship 5K Nonprofit to Hold the Annual 5K Run-Walk Scholarship Fundraiser, May 11, 2019, at 102 South Main Street, Wolfboro, New Hampshire, from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM.
So we've collaborated with a group that has done this for years. I've been part of it since the beginning and it's just, it's a small race, but it's really intimate and we're happy to keep participating with it. It goes from the front of the school, Carpenter School, to Crescent Lake and then back.
Okay, anybody in the audience who'd like to speak to this event? Hearing none? I'll close the public hearing. Board members? Hearing nothing? Can I have a motion? Okay, I'll do this one. I'll move that, the Park and Rec Department, Stacy Burns Memorial Scholarship, hold a 5K walk-run scholarship, May 2, 2019, from 9:00 AM to 10, 11:00 AM. And I move that.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll open up the next public hearing. The Wolfboro Park and Rec to Hold the Granite Man Triathlon at Carey Beach and various town and state roads on August 17, 2019, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM.
I'm tired.
I know. We still have a few more.
Yep, so this is our 38th Annual Triathlon. We have about 300 participants plus spectators. It's a great event and we're happy to continue doing it. We've, I think, just because it is the 38th year, we've kind of worked out all the kinks and I think we have a good system going with the police department and local people. And we're always looking for volunteers. I'll just say that.
Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak to this event? Seeing and hearing none? I'd like to call, close the public hearing. Board members? Any comments, questions? Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll move Wolfboro Parks and Recreation to Hold the Granite Man Triathlon at Carey Beach and various town and state roads on August 17, 2019, 2019, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Next public hearing, I'll open it. Wolfboro Park and Recreation to Hold Movie in the Park on the Foss Field Soccer Field at dusk on June 22, July 13, and August 10. All movies will end by 11:00 PM. Christine?
Yes, so we've been doing this for quite some time. We have limited the movies this year, so we, we dropped down to three just because we weren't getting as many people as we thought we should be. So we thought if we dropped it down a little bit and kind of showcased and, like, we are hopping on that first movie with another event, maybe that will pique the interest and since it's at the beginning of the summer, maybe more people will come out and we'll see what the future holds. Do you have the names of the movie on there or do you need me to say them?
No, you can say them.
Okay. So the first one, January 2, is The Incredibles 2. The second one is July 13, Wonder. And the third one is August 10, Ralph Breaks the Internet.
I'm going to that one.
Do I have anybody in the audience who'd like to speak to this public hearing? Hearing and seeing none? I'd like to close the public hearing. Board members? Any comments? Hearing none? Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, Wolfboro Parks and Recreation to Hold Movies in the Park on Foss Field Soccer Field at dusk on June 22, July 13, August 10, 2019. All movies will end by 11:00 PM.
Second.
Any, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I'll open up the next public hearing and that is the Wolfboro Park and Rec to Hold the Annual Turkey Trot 5K at the Railroad Station Depot and various state and town roads on November 23, 2019, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM.
So I believe this is the 28th Annual Turkey Trot, as well as the Granite Kid. We've done it year after year. Again, we work well with the Wolfboro Lions Club. They provide the volunteers, we kind of provide the manpower and it's a pretty popular race right before Thanksgiving, work off those calories.
Right.
Do I have anybody in the audience who'd like to speak to this event? Hearing none? I'll close the public hearing. Board members? Can I have a motion?
I'd like to move that the Wolfboro Parks and Recreation to Hold the Annual Turkey Trot 5K at the Railroad Depot and various state and town roads on November 23, 2019, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? I'm going to step down from the next one. Dave, do you want to take that one?
Way to go, Parks and Rec.
Okay, the next one is the Wolfboro Lions Club to Hold the 45th Annual Great Smith Canoe Race, Kayak Race on May 18, 2019, at Allen A. Beach in Dockside from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
Good evening. I'm Roger Murray. I'm here tonight representing the Lions Club, which is a sponsor of the race. This is our 45th race. It'll follow the same course as in past years, starting at Albee Beach and ending at the town docks. We will have rescue boats in Wentworth and in Crescent Lake and we'll also have people in the short, rapid portion below the Crescent Lake Dam. We're hoping for good weather, ice out, and a successful event.
Thanks, Roger.
Okay, is there anybody who wants to talk in reference to this? Close the public hearing? Any questions from the Board? Somebody like to make a motion? Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the Wolfboro Lions Club to Hold the 45th Annual Great Smith River Canoe and Kayak Race on May 18, 2019, at Allen A. Beach in Dockside from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Roger.
Okay, I'll open up the last public hearing on the temporary events is the New Hampshire Boat Museum to Hold the Model Yacht Regatta on Tuesday and Thursday from April 2, 2019. 2019, to November 5th, 2019, from noon to 5:00 p.m. at 96 Glendon Street, and we're hoping that there'll be ice out.
Yeah. I, I don't think it's gonna be, we're gonna make the, uh, April 2nd, but, uh, we'll put the boats in the water as soon as we can. Uh, my name is Mark Whitehead. I'm, uh, a member of the, uh, Board of Trustees for the New Hampshire Boat Museum and responsible for the model yachting program, uh, which has been nothing but positive over the last, uh, 10 years, so, um, and it's just an ongoing program that we hope will continue.
Anybody in the audience who'd like to, um, speak to this public hearing? Seeing and hearing none. I close the public hearing, board members. Any comments? Motion?
I'd like to move that the New Hampshire Boat Museum to hold the Model Yacht Regatta on Tuesday and Thursday, from April 2, 2019, to November 5, 2019, from noon to 5:00 p.m. at 96 Glendon Street.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
We are, we are missing a, uh, permit request, but hopefully we can track that down. It's, uh, for the, uh, first Saturday in June for the footy regatta, so hopefully it's floating around someplace where, I don't know, we'll track it down and get it to you.
Hopefully it'll get onto the next agenda.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the bulk vote, and, uh, we have an addition, uh, a request from the town manager to add authorization of the reimbursement of the trust funds for the 2019 fire apparatus purchase. Um, and that just was added, uh, late this afternoon, and, uh, can I have a motion to add that to the bulk vote?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, uh, we have on the bulk vote that item, uh, the weekly manifest, uh, property tax, a credit and exemption, and, and intent to cut, uh, wood and timber. So can I have a motion to, uh, approve the bulk vote?
I move that we approve the bulk vote for the, uh, weekly manifest, property tax, and other items mentioned.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? The next item on the agenda is appointments. It's to the Energy Committee, and Paul, I'll give this to you. These are your, um, people for your committee.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. We have two, uh, appointments. One is for John Byers, and the other is, uh, Richard Pangian. They're, they're, uh, expressed interest to join the committee. Uh, the committee is, is fully teamed up, so they're joining as alternates. Um, they've been, uh, even though they haven't been appointed, uh, since they, uh, signed up back in, I think it was October, November timeframe, they'd been active, involved, traveling around and, uh, collecting information. So I recommend, uh, to this board that, uh, Mr. John Byers and Richard Pangian, uh, both, uh, be approved as alternates to the Energy Committee.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
And I'll second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay. Next item on the agenda is the Town Manager Search. Um, and I would like to give you some information about where we have posted the ad and when some other postings going to come in. Um, Union Leader, it went in on, uh, the 14th of March, it will be in on the 21st of March, which are the two Thursday papers, and it will be, uh, in on Sunday, the 24th. Concord Monitor, the first ad will be in on, uh, this, tomorrow, the 21st, and the, uh, Sunday one will be on the 24th. The Granite State News, it was in last week, it'll be in on the 21st, that's tomorrow, and, uh, the following week. Uh, the town website, it was, uh, posted on the town website on, uh, the 14th. Facebook, it went up on different, uh, town, um, websites on the 11th. The, uh, new NHMA website, uh, it was put up on the 14th, uh, and that's free. Um, the MCMA will be, it will start on the 20th, and it will go until we take it down. And I have a, um, question about Lincoln, LinkedIn. Um, we need to create an account, and it's $16.80 per day, and I didn't know how many days the board would like it, um, posted. Uh, we could put it up on, um, you know, tomorrow, the next day, and know what approval you wanted to give on that. Does any board member have any, um, question or any timeframe? Want to talk about it? Paul, you're the one that likes the internet.
I'd put it up for three weeks. Um, we're probably gonna melt, uh, with, uh, with responses. So I, I would say put it up, you know, for, you know, two, three weeks, let it, let it go. I would also back to the, uh, Facebook postings and that. I, I, I've seen some folks in town who are on various, uh, you know, you're from Wolfborough, we have another, other Facebook sites. Just share it. Just share the, share with your, you know, with your colleagues on Facebook, and that's, that will help this, uh, get knitted together. I, I've seen people do that, and I encourage people, uh, to continue to do it. But back to the original question, I'd, I'd buy a LinkedIn subscription for that for two, three weeks. Put it up.
Or do you want two or three weeks?
Right.
Two.
Two?
Two.
Okay.
If it doesn't get anywhere in two weeks, it's probably not going.
That's why I'm kind of, because we get towards the deadline. Is everybody in agreement we'll put it on for two weeks?
Yeah.
We'll let, uh, Amy know. Um, so we have completed the, um, advertisement, and we've got that up. The next thing we were working on was the candidate's profile, and I have, um, an updated version of this. Um, I want to thank Paul and Dave who worked on this. Uh, we got this, um, done late yesterday. Um, and so I just give it to you to, to read.
Do you have a copy?
Because I mean, we need another one. Do you have one?
I, I have one.
Everybody's got one? We don't have to, um, vote on it. We can, um, vote on it at the April, uh, 3rd meeting. We won't start using it to, um, sort the resumes until, um, the 8th of April, when everyone's in, but I wanted to at least hand it out and let anybody, um, everybody look at it. Alrighty. And the other job that we're going to need to do is we need to update the essay questions now that we have the ad and the candidate's profile. And I didn't know who wanted to work on updating the essay questions. I'm more, Paul, you and I?
Can I do it with you?
Yeah. Yeah. The two of us.
Dave, too?
Okay. Paul and Linda?
One by the five. Dave, Dave said he'd join too, or she don't want to?
Uh, I, well, I don't know if we can.
Uh, Linda? I think we have plenty of these down there.
Does she have it all? You have one? If you want to do it, Dave, I can back off. It's only supposed to be two when we do subcommittees. Once we hit three, we are in a quorum, but I'm willing to let you and Paul do it if you want.
Okay.
You want to do it with Paul?
Yeah, I'll do it.
Ready?
I, I found the, uh, Linda, I found the and versus and.
You did find it.
She found it.
I, I put it there. I figured if you didn't find it, it wasn't anything I was gonna do.
I'll fix it.
All right. I think that's all for the, uh, Town Manager. And I'll hand this over to you, Dave, um, and all the stuff on the Town Manager Search. Okay. Uh, first item on new business, um, it's weight limits on Wolfborough Roads.
We've got a lot of roads.
Good evening, Dave Ford, Public Works. That time of year again. You seen the package? Uh, this year, really relatively late. This is, uh, one of the latest dates we've posted, but, uh, the road's still frozen, although we are seeing some decent signs today. Uh, you know, with the sun setting, snowbanks are finally coming down. So Monday, they'll be all posted, and, uh, we will continue to work with contractors. Uh, we don't want to stop everyone. Uh, there is a process in which we do give road restrictions, uh, permits to go on a day-by-day basis, uh, and they can contact the Public Works Office. Marie, uh, we have a system set up, uh, but we will ask contractors to reduce loads, specifically concrete trucks will ask to reduce loads, uh, people hauling. You've got to be respectful of roads and always use common sense. Uh, some of the roads even, um, are, that aren't posted, should be careful and watch out for soft shoulders. Uh, so we have the list here. Uh, we will have it posted in induced paper tomorrow, and it's the same list we've had, uh, for the last dozen or so years.
Hey, board members, do you have any questions? Can I have a motion to approve the posting of town roads on March 25th, 2019? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is a discussion about Albee Beach, and I didn't know who wants to...
This, this discussion is going to be, um, focused at this point, um, regarding the usage of the parking area and usage specifically by buses. Um, and I believe that maybe Christine and Matt might be able to speak a little bit more as to what we're looking to do and the, the problems that Christine observes at the dislocation with the buses.
We used to have our day camp actually go to Albee Beach. Uh, one of the things I noticed is, um, there's a time limit for our kids anyways to get picked up, and going down that road is, when you're going down it, it's more like a one-way to, to travel down to it. Um, and then when you get there, there's no, like, clear-cut turnaround if people are not parked appropriately. Um, we've had people request in the past to bring buses in. I feel like, um, Wentworth State Park is up the street, and for those field trips that they want to bring, that's what that state park is for. I feel like Albee Beach is more for, um, people who are visiting our area, you know, individual cars. Uh, the parking is small, but we don't want to extend the parking because the beach can only hold so many people, and also you have lifeguards that have to supervise those people. So my feeling is if you just limit, so no buses are allowed to go to that beach, that will help with some of the traffic flow, and it just makes it safer.
How does it, will it affect the number of people on the beach? Are you having, you know, a bus a week, a couple buses? Do you have one a weekend? What do we?
We've tried to encourage that people contact us, but mostly buses are just showing up. And our staff, one is not prepared if 40 children, 70 children get off a bus, you know, and then that does impact everyone who's there. My biggest concern is just a bus going down that road, like that drive, you know? It's pretty tight, and then if they get down there and you can't turn the bus around, how, where are you parking? And there's not that much parking, so now you have a bus that's parked there taking up five, seven spots, you know?
So do we push the problem someplace else?
Well, you mean to another beach?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I mean, I think Wentworth State Park, that's what it's for. It's for, um, when I was doing my day camp, there's a lot of camps that go and they pay to go to that beach. That's what it's for. They're able to hold that. I would say personally for all our beaches, I don't think we should be letting buses come in with a, a bus full of children to our beaches, just because it's made for people visiting our area, and we have plenty of people coming to our area.
So if we make a, a change to our ordinance, we should make it for buses at any of our town beaches, is what you're recommending?
I would say so, because we don't want it to be like, okay, we can't go to Albee, but then now we're going to Brewster, or now we're going to Kerry. And it's the same thing, we have small parking lots there. Some of them are lined, some of them are not lined, some of them are dirt, so whoever you have in there, it really impacts who else can go to the beach.
And, and I'm not, I'm not one way or the other on the question I'm about to ask, but, uh, some folks have approached me and said, uh, why not issue, uh, stickers, beach stickers, if you're a resident of the town, free, you know? That's what they don't, they're saying no charge, but, uh, you, do you want to go that? You want to go in that direction?
I mean, if you go that direction, how do you manage that? So now you're, you're saying you're gonna have to hire a beach attendant. So at the previous place I worked at, we didn't have lifeguards at first. We had a gatekeeper, and they were working the gate, and they would charge people if they weren't residents, and then if they were residents, they bought a season pass. That's how it worked. So I'm not proposing that right now, because that's a bigger issue, and I think you have to think full spectrum, like, you're gonna need somebody to work that gate if you're doing it and enforcing it.
So you're gonna need a beach attendant to check to see if a bus pulls in?
Well, we have lifeguards, so I think we post a sign and we have lifeguards before they even get off. Like, we will definitely reach out to local rec departments and people who have visited us in the past to say, listen, this is no longer allowed. I don't think it's abused a ton, but it does make a difference when a bus or two show up at any of the locations.
About a year ago, I, uh, commented publicly here on the absolutely miserable condition of the road, and I was told that, uh, we don't own the road but have an easement. Is that correct?
Yes.
Is there any way that we can fix the road? Because it's, uh, probably the worst road in, and, and I've been in all the roads, and that's probably the very worst one that people travel on in our entire town.
I know. I do work with Dave Ford, and he will, um, sometimes throw gravel down and spread that out, but I don't, I don't know if we're allowed to. I don't know the whole thing.
I think we've gone down usually in the spring and kind of straightened out the road.
Right.
But if you learn, uh, live on a dirt road, traffic, and pretty soon you have potholes, and I don't know whether he goes down more than that once, once a year. But I know he goes down once a year and, and does the road.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you might have kind of answered the question already, Christine. Do most of the buses that show up, are they from other rec departments, uh, summer programs and stuff like that?
Mm-hmm. So they're charging participants. It's a field trip. They're charging participants, and they're bringing them to a beach that has lifeguards that they don't have to pay a fee to.
Yeah.
So, I, I mean, you, there's a, there is a public, uh, state beach that they can do that at, and there's a fee. You can buy a bus pass through the state, and it's just a bus pass you buy.
So it should be, I was gonna say, it'd be actually fairly easy then to, with some kind of a email blast out to
Yes.
The rec departments.
Yes.
I'm sure you have contacts with all of them to say...
Just say, moving forward.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because I think you have enough cars, and it kind of, I mean, like I said, a bus goes down there, that takes up five to seven spots, and then what do you do?
And I think before Albee Beach was there, that's where they went. And then we became a free beach, and we got more and more buses.
Especially when we put in that new bathroom. That's when it was like, that's the place to go.
Okay.
How do you possibly drive a bus down there?
I know. I don't know.
So, board, let's see if we can get some direction here. Would you like to have Matt, uh, draw up a, uh, change to the ordinance that prohibits, uh, buses to our town beaches? Our parking lots to drop off for you?
You, you okay with that, Chip?
Yeah, we, we've had some preliminary conversations, uh, with regards to this topic. Uh, I believe that it's gonna be a, uh, first step in correcting some problems at that location for Christine, but we, we felt that this was the first step in getting those addressed. Not only is it a problem for her, but it is a, a safety concern for buses getting down in there and then being able to get law enforcement or ambulance services to that location. So it's, it's a problem, and I think this is step one in addressing more issues going down the road.
So if our town planner, Madam Chairman, if a town planner comes forward with a proposition, the public's gonna get a chance to weigh in on...
We, in order to change any ordinance, we have to do a public hearing. We'll get a first draft.
Yeah, good.
Similar to what we, uh, saw tonight, and then Similar to what we saw tonight, and then...
Perfect.
Or get something on here tonight. Before we even schedule a public hearing, we get a first draft of it, so it's out that we're going to do something. So your answer is yes.
Thank you.
Any other board members have any questions or concerns? So we're all in agreement that we want a draft policy?
Yep, yep.
Next item on the agenda is the Pop Whalen Ice Arena rates.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to really be able to table this until our next Board of Selectmen's meeting. We've got a meeting scheduled on Friday with the town auditor, myself, and Christine from Parks and Rec to discuss our balance sheets, the revenues, the expenditures, to be able to capture a better picture as to what Parks and Rec really looks like at Pop Whalen, and then be able to come back to the Board of Selectmen at your next meeting with a more concrete plan as to what rate we will be going with, and that should give us better data to justify the increases.
I'll make a motion that we table Pop Whalen Ice Arena rates. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Next item on the agenda is the Heritage Commission monitoring of barn easements. I received an email from Maggie Steer, who's on the Heritage Commission, and said that the Heritage Commission was willing to monitor our barn easements. They are not being monitored now, and I think it's a good idea, and I'll ask Maggie to come up and kind of explain what they'd like to do.
Thank you, Linda. Good evening. You may know that we have four historic barns in this community that are under 10-year discretionary preservation easements. One of them was just renewed last year. The others came into being before that, and they, they are granted, an easement is granted to the town in exchange for the owner agreeing to maintain the historic character of the barn. We could let that go for 10 years, or we could check in with them on an annual basis. And in many communities, the Heritage Commission acts on behalf of the Board of Selectmen to do that. Our Heritage Commission would like very much to do that. We are eager to support the barn owners in their preservation efforts of these important structures, and also feel that in the case where an easement was written with certain benchmarks that had to be met, this is a way for us to continually assure that, that compliance. So we are following the recommendation in a paper that was prepared a few years ago by attorney Carolyn Baldwin, who suggested that this annual touch base be done with the easement holders, just to assure the town's interests are protected and that the tax relief that they're receiving continues to be warranted.
I think that's a great idea. We, I know we have one out on Route 28 that I think has some work he or she needs to do to meet that easement, and I think that our assessor is not going to have time to go out and do that, so I don't know how other board members feel. Does anybody have a comment?
I think it's a good idea, but I think we only have two barns left.
I think we have more than two.
We actually have four.
But I thought the two on North Main Street burned down.
We used to have five.
Oh, okay.
Right now, we have one on Stonem Road. We have the 1810 House on Center Street. We have Browns Ridge Road, and then we have the Allen Road Realty one, the former Bittersweet. So two on Center Street, basically, Stonem Road and then the Browns Ridge Road.
Maggie, when we write a, an agreement between the barn owner and the town, are there milestone commitments that get made? In other words, I, you know, I do promise that I'm going to do certain things within certain periods of time. Are those, are those contained in this easement?
Linda Riedings pulled all the easements for me to review, and I looked at them yesterday, and only one of the four has those kind of milestones in it.
So I'm going to ask a hypothetical question, which I really shouldn't do, but I will anyway. So it's entirely possible, in a 10-year easement, that milestone could be completed in year 10, and nothing could be done from year zero to year through year nine?
Well, the way the easement was written was there were certain things that had to be done by year two, year three, year four.
So there are milestones in the easements?
The easement, there was.
Yep.
And on the other, are all of them that way, or just...
No, only that one.
Yeah, that's what I meant. So for the others...
The others simply say...
They could just do nothing from zero through year nine, and then in year 10, boom, you know, do something to preserve the, the character.
If the barn falls down due to their negligence, they have to repay the tax relief.
I see.
And that's the reason we want to monitor. We want to make sure that they aren't irrevocably changing the historic character. The reason these go into place is because there's public benefit to preserving historic structures, so it has to be visible from a public way.
Yeah, I wasn't questioning whether, you know, the purpose of the easement. What I was questioning is, is when we, when we sit together and we say to the, we say to the taxpayers, we want you to forego the revenue that's going to come in, you know, what are we getting in return? Are we getting some commitment to some, you know, level of activity, preservation activity, if that's the right term, over a period of time? And can, you know, is there like milestones? And if the answer is you only have one and the others don't, and I'm kind of in the space that says we probably should be looking, checking.
Well, I think my answer to that is, as long as they're preserving and maintaining the barn, they're meeting the test. If we go to do the annual monitoring and from year to year, damage is, is taking place, then I think we can say, you know, the purpose of this tax relief was to give, put a little money in your pocket to continue to maintain the barn, and we are not seeing that you're doing that. So at that point, we could revoke the bargain.
So at that point, that, that, you know, it's something I think we should just be careful of. That becomes a discussion with the code enforcement folks, right?
Mm-hmm.
And not the Heritage Commission...
We're not a regulatory body.
Okay, thank you for saying that.
We're just, we're just helping, helping out here.
Good, all right.
Okay?
Yeah, thank you.
And they're doing the checking, and I think we have one that needs very desperately to be checked.
Yep.
Because we put the milestones on there because of the condition of the barn, and we wanted to see it.
Brought back to its historic character.
Yeah, and they were clear. So it's good that we have a group that's willing to come up and report back to us. I think it, we should have as the Board of Selectmen a report, you know, once a year on how you have found the barns.
We, we have a sample of a monitoring report that's prepared by the Moltenborough Heritage Commission, and it's a one-page form with a photograph, so that's what I intend to follow for you.
Thank you, Maggie.
Sounds good.
So can I have a motion from the board to allow the Heritage Commission to monitor the town's barns?
I move that we do so.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose.
Maggie, we need to get a covered bridge now. That's unquestionable.
He has to be 75 years old to be at its original location.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is a bus ordinance. No, it shouldn't be. Yep, no. Oh, no.
I believe this was...
Yeah, this is the other one. Okay. For parking, a bus ordinance amendment relating to buses dropping off passenger on Central Avenue in front of the railroad station. We only had one spot in the past, and Matt has drafted, and this is draft one, of a change in an ordinance.
Hello, this is Matt Sullivan, Director of Planning and Development. This is a very minor change to the existing bus ordinance, which you may have never seen before, actually. It's a very small section of our existing total town code. This is Section 164A. It's a travel and parking restrictions on buses. Mary DeVries actually reached out in January of this year, expressing some concern about the restrictions that existed in this section to South Main Street in front of Kate Park only being listed as a parking location. And the suggestion was made to include Central Avenue in front of the railroad station as an additional location, whereas I understand historically buses have been dropping off, but we had a, just a sort of an omission or a contradiction in the ordinance that didn't provide for that in the town code. So what I'm just recommending here is to make that small amendment and sort of restructure into bullet points, just in case in the future we have a need to add some additional parking areas as well. So the only change here being adding in that Central Avenue in front of the railroad station as a location.
I presume Molly the Trolley doesn't have as many as 34, right?
That, Molly the Trolley has 34, actually. So I spoke to Kathy, and as I understand, the chief did as well. That is the capacity of Molly the Trolley, so that does comply.
Well, I didn't hear all that. Molly the Trolley is exempt?
No, Molly the Trolley is not exempt, but Molly the Trolley has a 34-person capacity.
Will mean that she complies.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Any board member have any question from that?
Yes.
Yep.
It says in front of the railroad station, west side or the east side?
I may ask Mary to clarify that a bit, if you would allow. You're talking about the east side?
Yeah. So the, I'm a little bit far a side.
The west.
That's the west side.
The west side.
Where the town built a lot of buses.
Yes, I can.
On the side of the kiosk.
Yes, yes.
It's the west side.
West side.
Oh, your side.
And, and do we want to say anything in the, in a marked location? It'll be...
We could.
We need to put a sign there, because it is at an angle so they can pull up, so we should maybe add at a, on the west side at a marked location?
Yep. I would say so.
That doesn't create a, that doesn't create a parking or navigation concern?
No, it's the way... Mary, you want to kind of answer that question for...
Mary DeVries? No, in fact, it works better if the buses, like the trolley, are aware that that's where they can safely pull up to pick up or unload their passengers. When a full-size tour bus, group tour bus is parked in that location, the traffic flow is not interrupted. It's, they can, there's plenty of space to drive and park in that area.
And it doesn't, it doesn't screw up any, any person that wants to park on a diagonal basis in front of the old ski shop?
No, not if they pull... It does not. We actually, our staff at the information center are trained to watch for the buses. Anyone who's pulling up anywhere else, we run out and help the driver to get into that spot. And then also, we've experienced, the organizers of these group tours are looking at WolfboroNH.us and seeing, they're looking for, because that's what they do wherever they go, and they're finding that only the Kate Park location is where they can park. So it's great, because the information center is there, the public restrooms, it's, there's safe crosswalk there. It's a great spot.
As in the butter to the buses, I know that, and you know too, that they often stay two to four hours so people can go shopping. You're going to stop that? It says they can only load and unload.
Oh, well, the, do you want me to speak to that?
Okay.
So, no, that won't interfere at all, in my opinion, because the buses currently, they know they can't stay there. There is designated bus parking in, off of Lainer Street.
But they do stay there. I mean, they stay there for a couple, I, you know, you know that.
The buses?
Yeah, they, I've never seen a bus stay for a half hour. You know, they come from Star Lines from New Jersey. I mean, I see...
Right, so I guess I'm only, can speak to what's happening at this particular location, and it is true that we have people around in that, that, the railroad station area to go out and help people move along when they need to, just, you know, in the best interest of everyone.
I just wonder whether you're going to lose some patrons, because they unload everybody with little tags. They go and shop, they go shopping for a lot, for an hour or two.
Yeah, but I, then they're supposed to go take those buses down to the Lainer Street parking lot, and there's a place for the buses to park.
Right.
They're not going to, they should not, and I don't, I don't think I've ever seen one parking there for three to four hours.
No.
I think what you're talking is, some of them are parking in front of Kate Park.
That's where they park.
No, she's talking down by the rail, yeah, this is for the, for the train station.
Okay.
Yeah.
Kate Park is okay?
No.
No, Kate Park is not okay for permanent parking.
Whatever it is.
But they're, they're not allowed to park there, but they can drop the whole...
But they do park there.
Nope.
It accommodates two buses.
Hi, John. May I address this, this issue? I was not prepared. John Sims, I live at Depot Square, right where these buses are, I think, going to be parked. They do park there now. They leave their diesel motors running. The diesel rises and enters our windows, so we have to keep the windows closed whenever there is a diesel bus idling outside. So the, I have seen them block the, the roadway. If someone is diagonally parking against the railway station and one of these buses stops, then that person cannot get out of their parking place. And I have seen, if you have a couple of long trucks parked there, then the bus stops all passage through. They don't generally stay there very long. They unload and they move off. But if they do stop, it would be nice if they turn their motors off so that we don't get diesel stink throughout our condominiums. And I'm speaking on behalf of all four condominiums, because we have that complaint throughout. So I would be very against, and they, they do so now. We suffer from it. We'd like them not to. But if they are going to, if they will turn their motors off as soon as they stop, then that would be good. I don't know if that's practical with a diesel bus, but it would certainly help our problem. Thank you.
Are they parking on the side of the railroad station by your house, by your condo?
Right.
Or are they on the, or are you getting it when they're parked on the other side?
They're parking in front of our condo.
Okay. This is going to move them so they don't park there to the other side where Molly the Trolley is, and there's a diagonal there?
Oh.
Am I correct, Mary? And not, and make sure they cannot park on that other side by your condo?
Okay, then I will ask that that please be enforced, that they do not park on our side. Thank you.
You've got the captain there, he's got his thumb up, and he's on it.
And he's got a new police car to work with, too. Can I, can I make a point?
Absolutely.
I, John, thank you for bringing up the, the idling engines.
Yes.
And one of the things that, in our master plan energy committee, I don't have the numbers, but if you think about the amount of idling engines we have in the summertime in our cars, and all they're doing is just putting out, you know, carbon dioxide, and that's not the right thing to breathe, so I'm, I'm with you. I think that to the extent that we can ask people, I really don't think we should be passing out tickets, but I think we should ask people to power down if they're going to be there for any, any given period of time. I think it's good for your, for your nasal passages, and I think it's good for our town to not have that kind of stuff wafting in the air. I'm completely supportive of what you want to do.
The buses are a particular problem, because their exhausts are at the roof at the back, and they just pump straight up.
Well, they could be. It could be, but you don't know what you're, you know, you don't know what you're sniffing from the tailpipe of a, of a beautiful Audi.
Well, that's true.
The point being that there's stuff coming out of tailpipes that if someone's just sitting there idling, we should, we should say to people, hey, while you're in our town, if you can't power it down, just power it down, and I think that's the right thing to do.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hey, anybody, any other comments from the board? All right, let me go back to this and see if we're in agreement. We're looking at adding the west side of Central Avenue in front of the train station, and that we are going to have signs marking the location. Is that correct? Have we got a consensus on that?
I think it's Railroad Avenue, not Central Avenue.
It is Railroad Avenue. I think it is.
Is it? Matt? He drew it up.
Yeah, it should be Railroad Avenue.
Okay.
There you go. We're going to go, John.
There we go. We'll go to railroad. All right, I'll read it again. Railroad Avenue in front of the railroad station, and we will have signs marking that location.
Right, so, and because this is subject to a public hearing, what I'll do is I'll bring a, an actual image of a sign that we can put up. We actually, I was just looking, there are some no idling signs that indicate parking, so we may be able to purchase one of those. And I'll actually draw out a bus-sized on a map so you can see where we're talking about parking this thing.
And can we, if we get a sign, we also can get that no idling sign?
Yeah, so I think we can find parking signs that actually say no idling right on them.
Or in front of Kate Park, too?
Yep, yes, we can. We have to find a place there.
Because that's the other place they can park and unload, so we should have the same...
Yeah, we can do that.
All right. Is the board in agreement that we should see another draft of this? Do we want to set a date for a public hearing, or do you want to see a second draft come back?
Set a date. Since it's only a one-line adjustment, let's set a date.
April 3rd? Does that give us enough time to notice how we do?
It does not give us enough time to notice, unfortunately. So we would have to push it to the mid-April meeting.
Okay. Whatever that date is, we'll do it.
4/20.
April 17th.
Yeah. Okay, so after we pay our tax.
17th, okay.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the Public Safety Foundation. I'll turn that over to the town manager, and he can introduce this.
Yeah, so a couple months back, Chief Rondo, Captain Livy approached me with regards to a gentleman who had some interest in creating a method for us to raise funds, or to raise funds for the purpose of ultimately a public safety building. And I will hand it over to this gentleman at this point.
Good evening, Board. Ron Haley. I am a resident of the town of Wolfboro. It is, in fact, the Public Service Foundation, so we should correct that. And I am the managing director of the Public Service Foundation, which supports teachers, police, fire, and hospitals. We do this by raising funds and helping with technological improvements in areas of interest. What that means is that we've formed a group of folks through business who are members of our group as an advisory board, and that advisory board has actually brought a lot of folks with these disciplines in teaching, police, fire, and hospitals onboard. So they're not only donors and helping us raise funds, but they have an intricate interest for one task or the other, and they get involved for that purpose. We did give you a quick summary of the Public Service Foundation. I don't know if you did get that. Oh, good, that's excellent. We do have a mission statement, as you can probably see. It's always worthwhile to read that out loud so everybody knows what we're doing. Our mission statement at the Public Service Foundation has three core components. We try to establish a community partnership. We address the problem-solving issues, and we provide funding for advanced technologies that improve the quality of life in any community. The goal is pretty simple. It's to support the best interests of the community, for the well-being of the people, the growth of the community and their daily existence. It was, as our town manager said, and fire chief, I should say, I had an opportunity to meet with the chiefs, the police and the fire chief, and we've had a lot of good discussion in terms of what this community is looking at doing in terms of getting a public safety building. My outlook on it was that this public safety building is completely antiquated. In the Public Service Foundation, what we look at is forming a private and public partnership with people so that we can actually help raise funds for things like this and provide technology support. I have to say that the Wolfboro community is probably pretty knowledgeable in this, standing in a building like this where they formed that type of partnership already and rehabilitated this building. We see it happening with the current library project. It is a common thing to understand that the tax base, from our opinion, at our foundation with the folks that we constantly sit and talk about this, is that the tax base anywhere just cannot support the services that communities have to provide, especially in police and fire services, emergency services here in this building. This building also houses the central communications for the town of Wolfboro. So what we are looking to do is offer our support to the town of Wolfboro and have some further discussions with the needs of the community in terms of going forward. There is folks that serve with us. A lot of folks are private citizens who, what they do with us in raising money, I'll give you a, for instance, we raised a lot of money for a couple of police officers in Massachusetts in the past year that were killed in the line of duty. We also raised some money for some firefighters that were also killed in the line of duty. So there are some folks that serve with us that tend to be very proprietary with their information, so we always ask that to answer questions. We love the open forums. Non-public sessions are sometimes worthy of people not wanting to come in and speak. So if that's an option for you folks, it's always open for us. I will come and speak to you any day of the week. I live in town, so I spend a lot of time talking to folks here, and that's kind of what I have for you. There's a pretty good brief we put together as a summary, so I think that does answer a lot of questions. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I have a couple. And I couldn't gather it. You are already a 501(c)(3) you had?
I'm sorry, Linda, but we did file, it's all in process. We were a little reluctant to come in too quickly because the government shut down and we were slowed in paperwork, and we actually got a notice saying that, gee, the government shut down, so your tax ID number was kind of waylaid in the IRS tax season, so.
But you're filed, and somebody gave it to you, and you're filed, and then you get it, there's no problem? That was the question I was asking. As I read this, it seems to be, you know, a national organization is where you're growing, trying to grow to?
We are. We have some associates that we've worked with many years. One in particular is a doctor who works emergency pediatrics in National Children's out in Ohio. I won't mention any names. The doctor is one of our premier advisors, where they have a small group themselves of philanthropists, and they raise money for many different needs. Because they're in emergency medicine, they service a lot of communities in the state of Ohio where they see the frontline folks, the police and the fire, and the emergency medical services lacking good quality equipment, lacking good facilities. And this was an endeavor that they took up with me to support so that they can be involved. Quite frankly, the folks don't really care where it is, what state we're in. I happen to be the managing director, and I live in this beautiful town, so I'm going to support it in that way. But there are, it really doesn't matter, we are going to grow to that level.
Okay. It was interesting, and I was trying to figure out, because you were here and then it was nationally. And so if we look at what we in Wolfboro are trying to do is to build a public safety building, that's a building project which I don't necessarily see there, but you would help with the technology? Or would you spin off a group who would work in town to raise funds for a building project?
We would do exactly that. We would spin off to make sure that the task at hand here in this town is a building. It is a facility, it's a state-of-the-art facility, in my opinion, that needs to come forward here. Whether you build a new building or whether you rehab a building is obviously this board's decision. But from a tax base, I can tell you the homework that we've done to look at how we would support this project. I'll give you a particular example. It's kind of long, but it does, it's worth talking about. The Wolfboro community, as you know, is part of a regional school district. That regional school district is serviced by the Wolfboro community. The high school, as you know, and the middle school, all of that stuff is here. We look at that in calls for service, population and daytime population. What comes to this community that the Wolfboro taxpayers are actually paying into the school community, which is like all the other communities, as part of the district do, but by the same token, the fire department, the police department, all of these other services are the burden of our tax base. If there's a catastrophic event, our police and fire are going, and where do those funds come from is constantly how we look at it and say. This daytime population that we have in this community is, if you look at the census, it says we're a community of 6,000 people, which is kind of laughable when you actually get out here and look at how many are coming in with the hospital, how many are passing through our community, not to mention the off-season, as I call it, where I hibernate because of all the tourists that come to town. So your calls for service, I think, for policing and fire and other necessities do burden our tax base, there's no doubt about it. I think the fire chief and the police chiefs attest to that fact, that that's something that they have to deal with in their budget. They have to step that up. So I find that when we look at our figures in our foundation, we try to take that into consideration and say, how much more can we help in supporting it? There is something else that we've supported. We have a lot of small businesses that are technology development, and I always say technology is moving so fast, it completely outpaces the tax base. It's almost impossible to keep up with. One particular company that we support out of Boston is, right now, the cutting-edge technology of opioid identification. It's also finding what is out there for, the chief can kind of elaborate, and bombs, a lot of these things. And the cutting-edge technology is right here, right now, it needs to be in the hands of first responders. It's probably about $75,000 for a piece that's this big. We're not going to get it because communities like ours can't afford it in the tax base. Police and fire and their budgets, they just can't afford it. So one of the purposes of our foundation is to look at those things. Some of those people that are in those technology businesses come forward and say, how do we help our communities? Because we all live in them. How do we help to get that technology in there? And how do we help form that public and private partnership to do the things that need to be done? That's kind of a long way around the bar in answering your question, but...
That takes care of mine. Any other board members have questions or want to make any comments?
Thanks. I appreciate Ron for doing this. It sounds, from what you've described, as I processed what I heard, it sounds like you're a kind of person that sits with our public safety teams, kind of figures out what we need to get invested in, whether it be the physical plant or the stuff that goes inside the buildings. And you help us find the money to do that?
Sure, sure.
And I'm going to be, you know, very direct. I mean, as a part of that, there's a fee that keeps your 501(c)(3) going?
Not really.
Perfect. I'm all ears then. So I think, I think what would be helpful for me is, at some point in time, we come back together and we kind of get more of a, here's what we want to do, here's how we're going to go approach it, and here's kind of the bill of materials and the things that either the fire, you know, or the police, or both combined folks think they need from an addition to a building. And then we'll see how that, you know, how that goes forward.
And it might help you if you just look at the summary that you were giving.
I'm on your website, too.
Okay. There is a statement of purpose. Our board members do sit and look at every project, as I said. I have a background in law enforcement and 20 years of service.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah.
I will sit here and I will understand the law enforcement side and the fire side of things. So there are other members that will sit there and say, this is our interest. We'd like to get involved in this particular project. But what we do like to hear for whatever project we're getting involved in is a statement of purpose, we call it. So it would behoove the chiefs and the board to say, this is what we're looking at. This is the type of building we're going to need. This is the type of materials we need or whatnot. And that's what we look at.
I think it's also important, too, this is a big undertaking. It's an eye-popping number, that was, or as Chief Rondo would say, a retina-detaching number. It's 12 million bucks.
Yep.
And that's before, you know, and that's before, you know, substantial fit-up inside of the building with, you know, technologies that you're suggesting be available. So that's a big ask on the town. At some point, you know, that number's going, you know, it may get smaller, may not, hopefully it will, but anything we can do to chip away from a private-public, I hate to use the word partnership, but I'm going to, from the private-part, public partnership thing...
I've always had a problem with that, too, but it does cross lines.
But we got to, we got to, we got to work together because this is going to be a community asset, and if the community, the larger community of public safety assets is brought to bear, and grants and all those things come together, we're, I personally, I'm all in on that. But I think a little more texture about what you want to accomplish would be helpful for me.
And I think that that's correct, because I think that's something that we're looking at, too. We've had an opportunity to look at what the fire services have in this community, what the police services have in this community, and we're just outdated. The antiquated building, we can't even, you know, there are laws that come out all the time from the federal and state level that I'm sure the chief can attest to, that, you know, they're required to do these things as heads of a department. And it's physically impossible to do it in the facilities that they're in. And as I said, it's obviously a town decision, but you have to figure out, are you building a building? Are you buying a building? Are you separating your services? There's a communication center in probably the heart and soul in every community where you have a communication center. If you ever walk into these things, you'd think you're at NASA. There's just so much technology that they try to jam into a room and eventually run out of that room. So it's, where do we put it? So I understand when you say eye-popping numbers, there is. The technology people that we deal with all the time are, as I said, we'd love to get technology in the hands of our police and firefighters in the front line. It's just not feasible with the tax base. You can't come in here and ask for $75,000 for a small machine and expect that the town is going to go, sure, no problem, we've got that. But we need it. We need that technology working for us, there's no doubt about it.
So, and I guess I'll go off a pause. I think we do need some direction, as you need some direction from us. And I kind of see two things. One is there may be a spin-off group that'll help raise money for a building, which is, and do, I like to call it public-private partnership, is that the people, they're public funds that are, and people are willing to give their own funds to make the project go through, which we saw at the town hall and here at the library, and that we're going to need to raise some money if this project's going to go forward. And then there's the technology, which I hear you talk more about. So if we put this new building together, if you help us with the building, will you help us with the technology, or do we need to choose one or the other? Because you're right, technology is very expensive. We just are starting a capital reserve account for the, just the console, the communication. So I...
No, I'll answer that question for you, Linda. The Public Service Foundation has talked about that, and we're going to expand the foundation across the board, anywhere we can, with whoever gets involved. We encourage people to come on board with us as advisories because it does give us that information. And we want to be, instead of funding a project, it's not a, what is it today, the GoFundMe pages? You know, you can do a cause, and you can get a building up. We're not there for that. We're there to help with a building, but we're there for the long term, as you say, and as we say, is we have people that are working all the time that say, have you seen this new technology in fire services? And a lot of people say, no, we haven't. So we want to be there to say, here it is. You can look at it and see if we can help you get it. As an example, we have a, there's a small company in Massachusetts that services police supply only. They recently came to us and said they were dying on the vine for their business because of the tax burden of so many communities in Massachusetts, their products weren't being bought. Just on the advice of one of our advisories who's very good at government contracting and government grant writing, sat with the business and helped the business get together with the police agencies and show them how they can, quote unquote, get some donations and get some grant money. And in a matter of a couple of months, they turned this right around. And I call that a public-private entity that worked well back and forth. And that's just, you know, we don't receive any money for that. That's just one of our advisories that went out there and said, it's a problem, it's my forte, and I'm going to deal with it. And that's what they did, so. Does that answer your question?
It does, it does. Anybody else on the board have any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
For the time to propose this. It's very interesting and exciting, and we'll need to stay in contact. I guess you'll do it through the acting town manager, and you are, we need to go.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Board.
Thanks. Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is other business. Does anybody have any, no, it's old business. Anybody have any old business?
I have some other business. I have put together the tallies on the voting, and I want to let the public know that everything passed money-warn articles. The two petition zoning board articles failed, and so did Keno. The two warrant articles...
The two Warren articles that had the least number of votes was the dockside restrooms and the public safety building. The restrooms had 52%. The public safety building had 64%. The operation, operating budget passed by 57%. All the rest of the Warren articles passed either in the mid-to-high 70s or in the 80s. There was one that passed at 92%, and that was everybody was willing to let the library spend the money gifts that they had received. So I did some looking back. I keep records going back since I've been on the board, looking at what passed and how they passed. And I also went back to a chart that was in the presentation of the Budget Committee talking about the general fund budget increase over time to see if the increase this year was significantly higher than other years. And in last year, the increase in the general fund budget was 4.3%. This year was three, I mean, last year was 4.3, this year is 3.42. And then I went back to look at what causes some of those large increases in the operating budget. Because there was an article or ad in the paper talking about how it has increased over time. And one of the things we have to realize that in 2005, when I came in on the board, we had a sewer moratorium, a water moratorium, and ADA lawsuit. And over those periods of time, we had to do some bonding. If I looked at the 2009 general fund, it went up 8.4%. Well, that's when our RIB plant was bonded. And so the interest in principle for that project fell into that year. And we need to also, as this went up, take a look at all the things that we have accomplished. And I take a look at downtown, and we have done a lot of work on the roads and sidewalks. And one of the places I think of the most is in front of the IGA. It used to be Hunter's IGA, where you could fall right off the sidewalk with a big trench. You know, we've upgraded the sidewalks. We've put in gardens. And I think really made the downtown, we did downtown streets that we spent a lot, a lot of effort. We look at the railroad station. We painted it, we repaired it, and we did the roads, and we buried the electric lines. When we had the sewer moratorium, you remember, we did the RIB. But in that project, we were also supposed to do a $12 million sewer treatment plant. Because of our, Dave Ford, head of our department, he was able to instead do repairs to our existing plant. And we have a high-grade process there, and that plan is functioning. So we saved 12 million. When I came on to the board in 2005, we had been in a drought. The board of selectmen at that time had a $5 million proposal to put a new treatment plant on Clark Road. Coming in, fixing our water plants, dealing with our INI, we didn't need that plant. And the Dave Ford came up with a safe yield for our reservoir. So in, you see an increase, but in that increase, we've taken care of a lot of those projects that we had to do in crisis. In 2012, the board started looking at doing asset management plans and trying to go from crisis management to planned-out projects and to be able to move and do some more cash projects. And our asset management plans will do our maintenance and our upgrades. And I can give you an example why that's so important. Those asset management plans, one in water, is we know where all our water pipes were. When I came on in 2005, the state of New Hampshire had done a lovely coat over Route 28 heading south. Brewster Academy did a project and hit our water line. We didn't know where the cutoffs were, and we drained all the water in South Main Street. Now we have asset managed plant, plan. Now we have all those water lines all laid out. So to me, we spent some significant monies, but we've come a long way, and we have addressed a lot of problems in town. I think the board needs to keep an eye on the amount of the increase. But I think that we did a lot for the amount of money that we spent. Does anybody else have any other business? Okay, town manager.
Just to give you a quick update, everybody is aware at this point, I'm sure, but on March 12th, we turned, Dave Ford and I had a discussion with regards to the bubblers at the town docks and the snow machine trail, at which point we decided it was time to turn the bubblers on to prevent any risk of damage of moving ice to the town docks. The finance department is working feverishly, and over the next week, the audit will be taking place.
Oh, goodie.
We will be releasing in the coming days an RFQ, an updated RFQ for the Libby to have that building looked at. We, we terminated the contract with the previous contractor for numerous, numerous reasons, and we're getting ready to release that. And lastly, Mr. Ford spoke of it this evening, just asking the community to be a little bit patient with the roads. We know that they're rough. We know that they're probably going to get a little rougher and a little bit muddier, but please just be patient with us when we get out of this New England spring. That's all I have.
Okay. Committee reports. Paul?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Just a comment. I, I think you're a pretty hard-working, dedicated person, and I want to thank you for my first year here. Okay, committee reports. I think, I think, I don't know if I mentioned, I went to the Chamber Quarterly Meeting. Was that two weeks ago or longer? I don't know. We did voting here. We had a lot of people come in and vote, and it was nice to see everybody. It was a, we, Lynda and I thought it was going to be a slow turnout, and that was not correct. We did update the profile for the, for the town manager position, and I think that'll get out somehow. I think it'll satisfy people. I hope so. I'm having continuing conversations with folks in, around our town about just our whole internet access stuff, which is pretty, you know, we, we, we and the rest of the state of New Hampshire are not that good at it, so I'm working on something there. On March 14th, it was Pi Day. For those of us who know the number, and, and the town, town offices had Pi. So there was, next year, I hope that the school kids will come and teach us what Pi means. We swore in a new police commissioner, no relation, but another O'Brien on the police commission. And I think that's, that's about it. Thank you.
We had Voting Day, which we were all present at. And I also was at a meeting for hazardous mitigation, which hopefully we, one more meeting?
Hopefully.
Okay. That's all I have.
Yeah, let's see. Last night, we had a planning board meeting. It was fairly easy agenda. We had a one-lot merger and some discussions about moving forward there. It was actually one of our shorter meetings of the past that I can remember, anyway, over the last five or six years, so. This morning, we had a community TV meeting. We reviewed our budget, where we're at with that. We've got a discussion about updating our bylaws. We're going to take a look at that over the next month or so. And I believe we also have a new person working with Timothy up there that's working on being trained here, so...
Woo-hoo!
Welcome to Community TV.
Selfies. Let's do a selfie.
And tomorrow, we have a, tomorrow night, we have a Friends of Liberty Museum meeting scheduled, so. And also, we're here, was here for the voting, and also was at the, Friday was at the Hazard Mitigation Meeting, so. That's it.
All righty. As we all did, we did the election, and it was, we, we started the day, and it seemed slow, and we thought, "Oh, this is going to be long." And as the day went on, it picked up, and it picked up. So it was, we saw a lot of people. In fact, it was a larger turnout than last year in voting. There was about 1,300 this year. I attended the Chamber Quarterly Meeting. I attended the Chamber Board Meeting. And I went to the Chamber Social down at the Yum-Yum Shop, and it was really nice to see that building renovated and, and it's white and blue and a beautiful view out onto the bay. So it was nice to see that. I attended a Subcommittee on Sinobacteria. It's the Subcommittee on Assessments.
I went to the voting. I've been reading the town manager applications as they've been coming in. I've been increasing a collection of maps of Wolfboro. If anyone has any maps before 1892 and wants to share them, I'd be very happy to hear about them. I've had some interfacing on the, someone interested in doing some work for the Historical Society.
Okay. Any questions from the press? Okay. Public input.
I just have a quick one. I, I understand that you needed to sidestep the issue of public use of Albee Beach and just deal with buses right now. But I also think that it's a little bit disingenuous if at Pop Whalen, we have an attendant to check people in for skating, and yet we feel we can't afford an attendant to check people in at the beach because the beaches get far heavier use than Pop Whalen does for public skating. I'm one of those people who does both. I love living in this town. I think they're great amenities. But I do think we've reached the tipping point at Albee Beach. So I just want to make sure you keep that on your radar screen.
Ask you a question.
Yep.
What problem do you think we need to solve?
Thank you for asking that. I have a very personal problem. I work Monday through Friday, and I live closest to Albee Beach, and I like to go there. I like to take my 95-year-old mother there, who has been swimming in Lake Wentworth all her life. She grew up here. And we cannot get into the parking lot of a Sunday afternoon or a Saturday midday. And it's very disappointing. And as Christine said, I think the bathhouses provide a great attraction. I've done an informal sampling of people I run into there and just ask them, "Gee, this is a great beach. Are you having a good day? Where are you from?" "Oh, we're from Milton." "Oh, we're from Wakefield." "Oh, we're from Osiphe." And when I say, "Don't you have town beaches there?", they say, "Oh, but this one is much nicer." So I think, these are not tourists who are coming to Wolfboro. These are people who are finding that we've got free amenities that their town doesn't have, which they're taking advantage of. They're not going downtown. They're not spending money here. They're coming and staking out the picnic tables and spending the entire day here, making it impossible for a broad range of people to come and use the beach on a short, shorter-term basis.
So the problem you're trying to solve is what?
I think it's use by out-of-towners who, and this is a tough one because you are splitting hairs. And I certainly understand we want our beaches to be opening, open and welcoming to our visitors. It's good for tourism. But when I, I see people who are living in adjacent towns who just think, "Here's a free beach," where it's on the backs of me, the taxpayer, and makes it impossible for me to get there when I want to go for a swim. I think there's a problem. That's all.
Maybe 30 years ago, some of you will remember this, we had stickers to go to Kerry Beach, and that lasted for about a year. And then there was, the then-Chamber of Commerce, before Mary's time, said, "Well, that wasn't fair because it, you know, we advertise Kerry Beach as a place where people could come." But I don't think, as I go by Kerry Beach several times a day, that Kerry Beach has the problems that your beach has. It seems to be more or less under control. I've never seen a bus there at all, and I don't see people being dumped off. So I, I think probably some sort of a sticker or something that, or a pass, you know, we have a pass to the solid waste, the town solid waste, something that I definitely think it needs monitoring. And as you said earlier, the Governor Wentworth Beach is operated by the state, paid for by the state, but you and I are paying for somebody from, from Methuen, Massachusetts, coming up with a bus of kids, and I don't really think that's fair.
The other thing I would say, having served on the State Parks Advisory Council for eight years, and when we were involved in doing a strategic plan, they were looking at beaches like Wentworth State Park. They're not moneymakers the way Hampton Beach or Franconia Notch State Park is. But they're continuing to staff them and maintain them, subsidized by other more lucrative properties they have because they realize it's an important amenity for the state. And since Albee Beach has opened, I think that beach has languished. Fewer and people, fewer people go there. I checked their fee structure last night. It's $4 for an adult and $2 for a child. They've even worked some arrangements with towns where the towns will take over monitoring of the beach for them. So I think we have a range of possibilities we could look at, and I really hope we do. Or we build nice restrooms and shade, shady groves at our other two beaches and then spread out the, the visitors who want to use them.
Would you say this problem is worse because of the new bathhouses?
I think...
Would you say that that was kind of a tipping point, or do you think it's been gradually building a wall?
Well, I've only lived here again for seven years, so I don't really know. And I think the bathhouse was new about then. Is that correct?
Yeah, probably.
But I think the problem is getting worse, and I think that there are two factors. One, there's a big sign that says "Free to the Public" at the end of the driveway. And the other thing is the proliferation of reviews on the internet. Word is out. I spent some time on TripAdvisor yesterday just reading reviews, and everybody said, "Oh, this used to be known only by the locals, but now, you know, it's a hidden gem, and you must go there." So the word is getting out. And as Christine said, the rec. department programs know about it, the day camps know about it. And I don't know how you can force them to drop their charges off at a beach where they have to pay when we're offering a beach that's free. They may just park at the nick and march them all across 28 and down the road. That said, you know, I also see the other point of view. I read the reviews from people who had taken the bike trail out and enjoyed a dip and gone ridden back. And I think Wolfboro is such a gem because of these things. But I do think it's an issue we have to work on and satisfy, you know, and find a happy medium, satisfy everybody. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Maggie.
I'd like to propose that, that Matt, our Planning Director, Matt interface with Mary DeBries, and come up with what Mary thinks, the Chamber of Commerce, what Matt thinks, and report back to the board with some ideas. And Maggie, you can come and hear them and have a discussion, and then see whether a public hearing, whether something should be done, and if so, we'd have to have a public hearing. But it's early enough in the season to do that. I do think it's a problem, and, and I, I think we should study it, let people input who have, who do have a vested interest, as I just mentioned, and then talk about it some more.
Thanks so much. That's what I was hoping for.
And I think Mary would like to come on up.
Thank you, Mary DeBries. I'm not prepared to speak on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce. I do...
Your microphone isn't working.
Oh, I always do that.
It broke it, Mary.
I could. But I, I live here. I'm a taxpayer. I work full-time. And all of this discussion so far leads me to, most importantly, respect what the Director of Parks and Recreation presented to the board this evening. I thought it was very clear and thought out. And I trust that our Director of Parks and Rec knows best. She's managing the beach. And I, we also heard from the acting town manager that this was a first start, I believe were the words. So I, I would think that there is a plan right there that's already been talked about earlier this evening. And again, I'm just speaking as a resident and taxpayer, that that's, that's wonderful. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Julie Jacobs. I want to continue about Albee Beach. My concern is the sign that sits out on 28. That is an off-premise sign, which is not allowed in Wolfboro. And it seems to be the, one of the only ones that's, that's not in a place that's... one of the only ones that's, that's not in a place that's next to what it's supposed to go. Businesses can't do that, regular people can't do that, but somehow our sign got on 28 on the side of a public road and a private drive. So what I think we could do quickly is, since that motel is being constructed right now, we could claim that we're removing the sign because construction's going on and we want to keep it safe. And that would solve a problem right this minute of removing the sign, keep it safe and taking it out of view of the general public. The sign could be moved back down the street, put up by the parking lot, where it should be anyway, just like it is at the other beaches. That may help solve some of this problem, just by taking it off that main drive, making it a little bit more difficult to find and maybe the buses and other people will just travel on down to Wentworth State Park where they should be.
Thank you.
Come on Suzanne.
Get out of here Suzanne.
I wasn't going to say a word tonight.
Yes, you were.
How could you not?
Maybe my, maybe my word would be ditto to Parks and Recreation. She's laid out a very succinct reason why and how to resolve it and I would hope that you would support it. I have driven in there umpteen million times, can't get out of there, can't get turned around, can't, can't have any time to go down onto the beach because you can't find a place to park. Just make it mandatory for our dump stickers to be able to go in there and no one with a dump sticker cannot go in there. They come from Maine, they come from everywhere.
Because it's the greatest summer resort in the United States.
I can't hear you.
It's because it's the greatest summer resort in the United States. That's who we are. That's what we, that's our brand. Oh, the first, oh wait, the oldest. We're the greatest resort in the United States. That's our brand.
We have the state park, we have Brewster Beach, which is a larger beach to accommodate the tourists. That Albee Beach is a little small beach, we keep putting in sand there because of erosion, natural erosion, we, we spend a lot of money on there, put in the, put in the, the bathhouse to answer your question. I feel that yes, once we put the bathhouse in, that was a free-for-all, go take a shower, spend the day, go to a campground afterwards, go to someplace that has no swimming pool, well, use Albee Beach. It's overused. It can't support, it can't support what's happening there.
Madam Chairman, I don't offer any clarity here, I, I'm kind of, I'm kind of betwixt in between. We do, we do, and thank God the internet knows that we're alive, I think it's good actually. We do promote that we are the best, oldest, coolest summer resort in the United States and that draws a lot of people who want, who want to come and visit and I think that's, that's good. I do think that there's a challenge here if we're, if we're creating a, a dirty situation at our beaches, you know, trash left behind, you know, we have to do cleanup, septic systems not working, tho, those kinds of things, we need to know about that. You know, there's a lot of other towns around the New England area that you do have to have some kind of a permit, you know, in my town in Massachusetts, GoHasset, you have to have a sticker that says you can go to the beach. I don't know where this thing falls, but I'm kind of in the space of let Christine tell us, if this bus thing's, if this bus thing isn't working well, let her tell us that we, we need to go to the next step. But I, and no disrespect to Maggie, because I know you care about things and I do, and I do too. I just worry about us starting to make the decisions about who can and who cannot go and come to certain parts of our town. I, I, that freaks me out a little bit.
Well, there's nothing-
Right.
There's nothing, there's nothing different about that than there is in Yark Beach or Salisbury Beach or, you name the towns and in and out of the state, there's always some area that's restricted to town residents only.
And Maggie didn't speak to the microphones, but Maggie said is, hey Paul, you got that at the dump, or I mean, if you go up to transfer station, if you go to the solid waste transfer station, you have to pay, you get a little sticker downstairs to do that. My, my point being, if we find that, you know, we are burdening our, our costs, then we need to have that discussion at some point.
Well, then I think that's perfect-
And I would like Christine to help us figure that out.
That's perfect for Christine, what you mentioned, the trash, what do we pay for trash pickup there? How many hours do we have people go clean up the beach afterwards? How many people is doing their grilling or what have you? And also, how many people drive in there that can't get a place to park that live here? And even if the buses aren't there, you're not reducing the problem of population of mot, of vehicles, out-of-state vehicles, out-of-town vehicles, parking in there and then we can go in there at 10:00 in the morning or 2:00 in the afternoon and we can't get a place to park? People are trying to park on that little narrow road going in? I mean, there should be one, one or two places. It's a, it's a free-for-all, it's freebie, come to Wolfboro, everything's free, the taxpayers will pay for it all, we pay, we, you know, and so can't we have a piece of the pie ourselves? A piece of a wonderful little, private little beach?
Three beaches.
Christine, I have a question with you. Do you keep account of the number of people? Do we have a safety issue of the number of people that are on the beach?
I don't have the records with me right now, but I can definitely pull it up. It is one of our most popular beaches, so I'm well aware there is an issue. We've staffed it with more guards and specifically someone in the parking lot to try to man, especially on Saturdays and Sundays like we're hearing. I moved day camp over to Kerry Beach just to take that load off that beach because it is such a popular beach. So it is something that I've talked to the previous town manager, it's something I've talked to the current town manager and Matt Sullivan and Paul O'Brien, that it's definitely something we should address and kind of look at. It's not an easy decision tonight to say, no residents, residents, but what I'm saying is it's not a problem to have a gatekeeper, but it's something you need to plan for. It can't just be like, I, I don't like when you have a rule, but then we don't follow it. Like, here's a pass, but nobody's checking it. Like, how are we going to manage that? So it's not that it can't happen, I just think we have to be very clear and like we said, we're the oldest summer resort in America. We're not saying give it away for free, but we have to be very careful because we want people to come to Wolfboro, but then we say, but we don't want you to use our beaches. So we have to be clear. I do feel that maybe that beach might need a gate attendant just to say, hey, our load is full, you have to leave, you can't park at the neck and come here, that's it. Maybe you come off the bike trail, but you're not leaving any cars.
And, and that was my question, are we overloading the beach and the water? Are we running into safety hazard? Forget about the parking lot. I'm, I'm talking about the safety of people, the number of people that are on the, on the beach, is there a maximum amount of people that we can, can handle on that beach? Are we getting so that it's just so over, overcrowded? Or are we okay on the beach, but we have a parking lot issue?
I personally don't go to the beach on the weekends.
But I do feel that from hearing from my staff, it is very crowded. They are managing it and I have another person on there, but that's the one reason why we said no buses, because if a bus fills up with 40 kids and then you have everybody else, that's where it's really impacting. So like the town manager said, this is the first step. I don't think we're stopping here, we are having conversations to kind of propose something before we present it.
And to follow what Christine is saying, everything that was mentioned here tonight by people coming up to the podium has been discussed already. The problem is, we don't want to do an immediate reaction and do it the wrong way.
Correct.
We want to do it the right way, so that's why we're phasing it. So phase one was very easy, let's get rid of the bus problem that is an immediate problem and then let's look at the other issues going forward and do it right and do it once, as opposed to doing it wrong and then having to deal with the ramifications of that.
Right.
I'm, I'm completely supportive of that.
Thank you.
Do I have anybody else in the audience like to give us public input?
Yes, thank you. I prepared a report on the snowmobile trail from the perspective of the occupants of Depot Square, there are six of us, and I happened to talk to Grant Hatch yesterday and he said, add his name to the, to what I am going to say. The snowmobile trail was built on, I think you should have, yes, you do.
We did.
Yes, thank you, town manager. I was too late to go on the agenda, but I'll do this instead. The trail was built on January the 2nd. By January 31st, our estimation is that 15 snowmobiles had used the trail, which is less than one per day. And I think that's probably because the lake access was, was not adequate. In February, the use dramatically increased and it was heavily used on Fridays and Saturdays, a little less on Sunday, and then light use on the rest of the week. At least 95%, at least every, everyone that I watched went straight out onto the lake. So it serves as a link between east of here and Wakefield and the lake trails. Those 95% did not stop and spend money in town. I'm sure that, that Joe Green and maybe the, the Downtown Grill saw some increase in business, but the businesses that were blocked by the arrival of the snow, the snowmobile trail probably lost, lost some, but I don't know. And those are numbers that, that can be found, I am sure, but I don't have them. End of February, the, the usage dropped off quite quickly and by the 14th of, of March, the trail was removed. So it was really only significantly used for the month of February. The, the earliest was at 7:00 AM, the latest was after 10:00 PM. There are no, there are no restrictions on when the trail is used. And, and so we hear them all when they go by because as they're going up and down, they're revving their engines and so forth. They stop in front of our building to use the restroom and they leave their, their machines idle while they're there. I have seen snowmobile drivers, no taller than this, accompanied by adults on other machines, trying to maneuver their way across Main Street. I don't know whether we want that situation. The snow that's used to build the trail is street snow, so it's full of grit and oil and when it thaws, it's black. If you want to see an example, if you look to the, the north side of Depot Square in the parking lot, they piled all of the street snow up and it's melting and it is black as soot. And just beyond it is a similar pile that was scraped up from the parking lot in the back and it's still white. So that shows the quality of the snow that is there. When it melts, it forms oily puddles. The trail blocks our front door and the only way then in by emergency is through our garages and the garages are full of automobiles and there is no easy way in for, say, a stretcher or a wheelchair. When the snow melts, it forms puddles on our sidewalk. These puddles freeze and thaw and when they are thawed, they are lakes that are impossible to go through because they're a couple of inches deep. When they freeze, they're an icing rink. And that freeze-thaw cycle is tearing up the sidewalk, making it much worse than even the poor condition it was on before. The, it's clear that the snowmobilers benefit immensely from this trail because it gets them out onto the lake very easily. But I'm not sure that the town benefits from it at all. And if the, the choice comes next year, we would request that you reroute the trail somehow, maybe it comes out through the golf course and goes down to the lake that way, maybe there are other ways of routing it, but I think that routing it where it is now is not doing the town any good. We are trying to sell one of the condominiums and we had to hold off on selling it because right now the trail, or at that time, the trail was an unattractive nuisance. And so we had to wait until the trail went so that we could represent the condo as it is for sale. So I would ask that when it comes up next year, that you think seriously about rerouting it or not approving it in front of our building anyway. Thank you very much. If there are any questions?
Thank you, John.
Good.
Thank you, John.
Mary DeBries, on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce, I want to just take a moment to remind everyone who's planning these wonderful events that we heard so much about this evening that as soon as an organization has their event planned with a date, we are happy to add that to the community calendar of events and that we will, if we hear directly from the organizers, we'll make sure that we publish the contact phone number, for example, that the organizer wants out there for the general public. So just thought of that as I was listening to the multitude of temporary event permit applications earlier. Thank you.
Is there anybody else out there who'd like to give us any input tonight? Seeing none, can I have a motion to go into non-public?
So moved. Second?
Paul?
Aye.
Aye, yes.
Yes. Okay, here's the schedule.